Chief Development now convenes this hearing. In accordance with the open government law, public notices for today's proceedings were sent to the media on Friday, July 10, 2015, and again on Tuesday, July 14, 2015. For the record, today is Friday, July 17, 2015, and the time is now 2:00 PM. The committee will hear and accept testimony, both oral and written, on the following items: Bill Number 103-33 introduced by myself, Michael FQ San Nicolas; an act to provide for the legislative submission of a non-binding question during the 2016 general election to determine public support for additional public borrowing for categories of capital improvement projects; Bill Number 106-33 introduced by Senator Frank Uggan Jr.; an act to amend subsection 4104 of Article 1, Chapter 4, Title 4 Guam Code annotated relative to providing preferential credit for career employees of the government of Guam who have completed their post-secondary or postgraduate education with the assistance of the Pedro Doc Sanchez Professional Scholarship and who apply for supervisory or managerial positions within the agencies and departments of the government of Guam. We also have Bill Number 113-33 introduced by Senator Tony Ada and Senator Rory Rispicio; an act to add a new Chapter 8 to 11 GCA relative to quantifying and reporting the effects of the earned income tax credit as it relates to the Compacts of Free Association. We have Bill Number 128-33 introduced by Senator Frank Bloss Jr. and Senator James Espadon; an act to add a new Chapter 17 to 4 GCA relative to the creation of the Catastrophic Leave-Pool Act of 2015. And lastly, on the bills, we have Number 130-33 also introduced by myself; an act to add a new subsection 22437 to 5 GCA relative to refunding the government of Guam General Obligation Bond Series 2007A and 2009A respectively by issuing a government of Guam General Obligation Bond Series. We also have today joining us is Ms. Janine Guevara, who is a nominee for the position of member at the Department of Parks and Recreation Board of Commissioners for a length of four years as a term of service to the people of Guam. Ms. Guevara, we have received lots of testimony from interested people who want to say a lot of nice things about you on their behalf. But before we call you up, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge my colleagues present today. To my immediate right is Vice Speaker P.J. Cruz, and to my immediate left is Senator Frank Uggan Jr., Senator Tony Ada, Senator Frank Bloss Jr., and Senator Tommy Morrison. Thank you, colleagues, for joining me today. We'll go ahead and begin, Ms. Guevara, with your nomination. That way, we can have you out of the way so you don't have to sit through all the bills. So please join us here.
Thank you. I'm more than happy to sit through the bills as well.
We'll make sure we have you sit through the ones that have to do with the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Amen.
But today, you're going to be testifying with respect to your nomination to serve on the commission. Before you do, I just want to acknowledge the individuals who took time to write in support of your nomination. We have Mr. Edward Poppy Jr.
My former boss.
Ms. Patricia Diego.
Hello, Mom.
Mr. Anthony Godwin.
Former boss.
Mary Ann Carlos Galang.
My goddess.
And Mr. Leonard Calvo.
Yes.
All of these individuals, and it's in the record, have submitted testimony in favor of your appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. We also have here your packet that all of my colleagues are able to review, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to go ahead and provide an opening statement and, I guess, share with the members of the committee why you're interested in serving on this commission.
Okay.
So the floor is yours at any time. Please state your name for the record.
I am Janine Paris Guevara, and I'm here for approval from the Senators for Member for Department of Parks and Recreation Commission. Hafaday, Chairperson San Nicolas, Senators, I am here because I have been nominated to be a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission and humbly ask for your vote of approval. At 47 years old, I have many things that I am very proud of. I have been married for 23 years now, which in itself is a great feat. The fact that it's a happy one is a gift from God. I'm very proud to say I've helped raise four beautiful children, Jade, Jordan, Justin, and Jake. Oftentimes, parents teach life lessons through example. Through my grandparents, Amalia and Charles Paris, I learned that we should always serve by feeding those who are hungry. Meal times at my grandparents' house in Tumuning meant two huge meals three times a day, feeding an army of family and Tumuning boys. Growing up, my mother would often take us to St. Dominic's. When I asked her why we did this, she said, "Because," and that was enough. For three years, we fed every Monday at Kamalan Karadat. My dad would make the main dish, my mom the vegetables, I'm dessert and helping to serve. And through these lessons, I was taught that we should not be happy to just be, but that we should take joy in serving others. For my own kids, I've taught them that when you're asked to serve, you have to serve. They've served on student councils, honor choirs, in the National Honor Society, and in various plays. As teenagers, they've already helped to raise tens of thousands of dollars for their schools and their island. I've taken them to help feed the homeless on Thanksgiving Day with Salvation Army, where they've helped to serve and provide entertainment. I've had them perform for the Elite Shelter Kids on several occasions and at the Relay for Life. I've taught them that when you see a need, you fill the need. I know many of you through my mom, Doc Paris. You know her work ethic, and so then you know mine. She served for several governors and senators and as secretary to the Democratic Party for nine years, which meant that I was there too, serving right behind her because she was my boss. When she was diagnosed with Alzheimer's, I served her in a different way. For 12 years, my children and I helped to take care for her before she passed. My parents instilled in me a great pride of culture and of this island. By serving as a member on the Commission for Parks and Recreation, I want to do my part in not only helping to provide beautiful parks for our locals and our tourists visiting us, but also to help improve what we have to offer through partnerships with local businesses and groups with the same goals. I work well with others, and I work hard. My kids hate it when I say "can't" means "won't," but this is how I tackle problems. Don't tell me it can't be done. Let's figure out how it can be done. I come from a long line of proud and generous servants. I would be most grateful for your vote and look forward to serving you. Sitsu Smasi.
You know, I was going to say the election's not till next year. That was very well.
We can't all be senators.
Very, very well done, Ms. Guevara. You know, having gone through your packet and reading some of the testimony from the individuals who are encouraging us to consider your nomination, I think you're going to be an excellent addition to the
Thank you.
...to the commission. We are ramping things up over there, trying to get some stuff off the ground, so I just wanted to give you a real quick overview and try and gauge your perspective on some of these things. One of the recent issues that was brought to my attention was some of the local artists, particularly the musicians. When I was growing up, I used to always be able to go to like a pavilion and listen to some local bands as they practiced their sets. And a lot of these local bands have been unable to do so because of some recent changes up at the department. But I brought this to the attention of the commission, and I know the chairman is interested in us reopening that venue for our local musicians so they can be able to use the pavilions to practice at night so that when they get a gig or they perform at a wedding or, you know, some other event, that they're going to be ready to be able to put on a good show. How do you feel about us reopening the pavilions away from residential areas, you know, where they're not going to affect anybody of the noise, but in places where they can practice without disturbing anybody? Do you support something like that?
Well, first, I would like to say, Senator, that my husband's family, his elderly family, several have passed away. They were known as the Singing Guevaras. His first cousins are Johnny Sablon, Joileen Suba. My kids have more than 600,000 hits on their YouTube channel. I come from a family of singers, so I definitely would support a venue for them to practice their art.
Fantastic. That's really the main thing on my list of things to tackle with the department. I do know we're wanting to get more resources into Parks and Rec, so we're going to need the commission members to become greater advocates.
Yes, I'm very good at that, sir.
Wonderful, wonderful. You know, because one of the things I always try to remind any interested parties is that, you know, as much as we want to market our island and bring in visitors, the attractions need to be at a certain level where we're going to be able to be proud of it, not just locally, but proud to bring a visitor there.
Yes.
And Parks and Rec has a lot of areas that they're responsible for, but they need more resources to be able to get them to a level that we're going to be able to say, you know what, this is a place we're going to be proud to bring a visitor to. So I'm just going to give you a heads up that as the months and weeks go by, we're going to be needing the commission to become more active in trying to help us get funding from other resources so that we can improve our parks, improve our beaches, public facilities, so that, you know, when you go driving around the island, regardless of whether it's in Tumon or outside, all the way down in the south, you're going to be able to go to a nice facility that has good restrooms and
A clean restroom.
...good place to sit down and eat, yeah. I mean, we know, we all know the condition of a lot of these things. So I'm very excited that you have that can-do attitude. That's going to be very critical in getting the changes we need in place for our community to be able to experience an improved Parks and Recreation environment, because everyone's working so hard, but we just need to make sure that we get it up to that standard.
Yes, and I look forward to the challenge.
Wonderful, wonderful. I'd go ahead and turn it over now to some of my colleagues if they have any questions. My vice chair, Senator Torres, do you have any questions for Ms. Guevara?
I just want to comment. I love your enthusiasm, and all I kept thinking is, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing more powerful than a woman motivated.
Amen.
And I look forward to your contribution
Thank you.
...to the board.
Thank you.
I won't get between the two women. And that opening statement, I just want to remind her what her mother's position was and when she announces next year candidacy, that it's on the right side of the ballot.
I married a Republican, so we're yin-yang at my house.
That needs to be the left side of the ballot. Senator Uggan.
I'm going to follow up with just a brief statement in regards to Vice Speaker Cruz. First and foremost, I had a wonderful opportunity for about three years to work alongside your mom in a particular senatorial office, and I truly enjoyed it. There were occasions when, in fact, you did visit the office and we had conversations. But just a couple of things on, as it applies to Parks and Rec, I think there's two areas that I would like to ask you to please pay additional attention to, only because over the course of the last several years, there's been a challenge in terms of getting resources to these particular areas. One is the Park Rangers Program. I know that they are in the process of acquiring two additional individuals, recruits, for the Park Ranger Program, and it's been in dire need of additional personnel, but they also are in need of vehicles. So please, if you can work closely with Mr. Bloss and see what can be done. And if you can identify the resources internally or with the front office, we'll be more than willing to sit down with you with the chair and see if, in fact, those resources can be redirected so that you can reinforce the Park Rangers Program at Parks and Rec. The other aspect is, is a facility that many of our people who do not have as much resources resort to for their final resting place, and that is the Lintiaako Nimitz Cemetery. I ask you to please take a look at that and see if, by any chance, there's anything that we can do. I know that we continue to lay our people to their permanent resting place on the ground, but we're lacking, we're starting to come to the point where we no longer would have land space.
Space.
And I think going, looking at the apartment complex approach may be a lot more appropriate moving forward, and how much that's going to cost and see, see what the required investments would be, because, like I shared with you a little earlier, a lot of our people continue to look at that as a site for their final resting place, and I would like to see what we can do to enhance that so that our people can feel comfortable that they're going to be at a place
They have a place to go.
...that is properly maintained and that they have additional accommodations. So please, those two particular areas, but Ms. Guevara, I also have worked closely with your husband on a few occasions when I would have to come in for a signed permit, you know, so we do have to go through his particular section. So I appreciate the opportunity to have worked with not only yourself, your mom, and your husband, but I look forward to casting my vote in the affirmative on your nomination, and I certainly wish you the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Senator Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Guevara, my first interaction with you was at Song Fest.
Yes.
Yeah.
Academies.
Wonderful, yeah, wonderful, Mr. It's a ceremony.
I'm half clown.
As long as, as long as they don't run out of food next year.
That was not my fault.
I didn't get a chance to eat, but it was, it was, it was a wonderful event. You know, just to follow up on Senator Uggan's inquiry into you looking into the cemetery, I think maybe I think a better question or the question maybe we should look at is, does government belong in, in the cemetery?
The cemetery business.
You know, should it be something where it would be a public-private partnership where the government, the government provides a land and have the private firm actually handle the burial services? I mean, we currently have an issue with upkeeping the Lintiaako Cemetery in Nimitz Hill, and it's to the point where Mr. Cruz from Manila has time and time and time again has expressed his dismay with the, with the cemetery. And I hope that maybe it'll be something that you bring to the Board of Commissioners, that maybe it is something that we start looking at getting out of the business of and having a private firm handle it, or whatever you guys come up with, but I think the issue needs to be addressed. My brother's buried there, and he's buried at the way top. Since the 70s, I mean, I was just up there maybe two weekends ago, and we are literally down in Peti now, you know? I mean, that's how far, that's how expanded the cemetery has gone. I'm not even sure if we're within our boundaries up there anymore. So maybe it's something that you put on the priority list and at the top of the priority list and look into so that we don't have this issue of we're looking down the hill and right, right there's somebody's backyard and the cemetery's there. So hopefully that you'll be able to look into that and have the, have the Board of Commissioners make a decision and working with the director and the department, you know, because the department is challenged with just the parks and facilities and everything else, and with this on their plate too is something that, you know, I don't, I hope that you'll be able to find a solution for. But other than that, you know, you have my, my full support, and you have my vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
The chairman will put your confirmation on our next scheduled session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Bloss?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the yard that Senator Ada was referring to is the vice speakers. A little joke that he and I have gotten, okay? Touche. So anyways, Janine, you know, first off, thank you. Thank you for stepping up the plank. But, you know, I guess the question I have for you is, what interested you wanting to be a member of the commission?
Well, you know, I still feel that our family has a lot of energy and love, but when I asked my husband if I could adopt another child, he said, "I'm trying to kill him." So I then turned to friends and said, you know, what can I do? I do run a business at Father Duñez. It's called The Friar's Den, but I'm off at about 1:15 in the afternoon, so that leaves, leaves me with a lot of time, and I have a lot of energy, and I think I'm quite smart. So I wanted to volunteer my time. I do have a friend at the governor's office who had, when I asked, "What can I do?" She actively looked for where there was a need, and I always would like to fill the need, so that's why I'm here.
Well, my colleagues have basically shared some of their concerns with regards to maybe things you can bring up to the board, but what is one of your first priorities? What is one of the things you want to bring up to the board or bring to the commission for discussion?
Well, I will always look towards what will best further our island, although I do feel very greatly for cemeteries where our ancestors lay. I am most interested in sprucing up the parks and the bathrooms where the tourists come, as that's where our greatest income comes from. So that would be my top priority, but most definitely, I will not put anything on the back burner.
Okay. And to be very honest, this last question is actually a question that would determine as to how I would vote for your, for your confirmation. Do you want her to be part of the board, Mr. Gro...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
My assistant.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
You know, Senator Bloss, you already made that strong woman statement. I don't think Ms. Guevara can have any say in this issue.
Happy life is a happy life.
Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Janine.
Hafaday.
Thank you for wanting to do this, DPR. I love DPR, served many years there, and we have wonderful folks up there that really want to do good things for Guam. And you reminds me of, your statements remind me of a good commission member at one point, Dennis Zermeino. I don't know if you remember him, but he not only fought hard for resources and bringing resources to the department, but he was really a staunch protector of the facilities. I mean, protect what we have and protect what we entitle premier facilities and what we, our community uses. So I'm sure you not only want to bring resources, but protect what we have. There is a challenge, they brought up with the cemeteries, but I think it's something that we've come to where, where I think DPR is one of the only jurisdictions, I think, in the world of all park services that, that has a memorial service under its, built into its mandate. And it's something to look closely at. Senator Ada mentioned that, I know it's very sensitive, but I think it's probably, we come to this time where we have to see if we even should be in the business or the cemetery business. It's a very sensitive service. It's a, requires a lot of resources, and I know from firsthand that a lot of those folks up there are being pulled from their specific objectives and, and duties to man and take care of that facility, and it shorthands the other divisions, it shorthands the other programs. So I think it comes a time where hopefully the commission can make some recommendations that maybe we should no longer be in that business. There's some tools at your disposal, and I hope you can note this down. We've worked closely with my colleagues, and you can look at Public Law 3309, which is that we've allowed some resources from the Limited Gaming to go towards the Department of Parks and Recreation, which is one-third of that, that funding source, and it's, it's to support facilities, equipment, and supplies. So it's an additional revenue source, and I hope that, that DPR with its commission can, with yourself there, look at how we can better plan and use for that fund. The other thing, as I spoke with the protector of the parks, is another tool that you could use, is, again, I always bring this up, is surveillance camera authorization that we now are built into the emergency reporting system with the E911 Fund, because we got to protect these parks.
Yes.
I mean, importantly, protect our tourists that go to these parks, and we're seeing a lot of our tourists getting attacked at these parks, especially isolated parks. So there's a tool that you could work with.
To provide that extra layer of protection for them.
Yes, I mean, can't be there 24/7, but certainly we can watch the facility 24/7 and, and catch those, apprehend those folks that are causing these crimes from vandalism of our parks, from attacking our tourists at these parks. So I wanted to mention that to you, and I hope you can note that, because it gives you some tools. I know you want to look out for resources, and
Yes.
...but you have some tools at your disposal right now, and I hope you can look at that right away with your team up there. And I work closely with you. You're a good friend of the family, good, worked very closely with your husband. He does a tremendous job up at DPW, and you have my full support.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. So I guess everybody here's voting yes. The one thing I wanted to leave you with, Janine, was there's been a new development in DPR that's going to require the commission to take some affirmative action on, and that is the use of the park assets for private commercial purposes. It's creating new opportunities for our people to be more enterprising, and it's also creating opportunities for our parkgoers to be able to avail of some new amenities. We do have the Poké Frye up there at the swimming pool.
Yes.
I know that at some of our beaches now, we have vendors who are providing rental units for, you know, swimming accessories, flotation devices, those kind of things. But I don't think the commission has formally adopted a procedure by which to bid out those services or to properly notify the community of the available
That opportunity, yes.
...space to rent. So I know we're all giving you a long list of things to consider.
No, no, it's great.
It bodes well. It means that, you know, everyone's looking forward to you working there. But I'd just like to also add that to your list as well. The sooner we can get some kind of formal adoption of a procedure by which these things can be bidded out and made available to the community, it'll open up more opportunities, it'll create other economic activities going on, but most importantly, the, the uniform procedure, the uniform process will ensure that there's an element
Fairness to it all, yes.
Right. So that can also be one of the things that you have your eye on when you get into the commission. But aside from, aside from that, I'd like to thank you for accepting the nomination. I think that you're going to be an excellent contributor to the whole process, and I will be putting your name forward for an affirmative vote at our next available session.
Thank you.
So thank you so much, Ms. Guevara, for joining us today.
Thank you.
That'll go ahead and conclude the hearing on your nomination. We're going to go ahead and move now on to the next items on the agenda, which are our docket of bills. First, on the list, we have Bill Number 103-33 introduced by myself. I'll go ahead and make an opening statement on this bill. This is an act to provide for the legislative submission of a non-binding question during the 2016 general election to determine public support for additional public borrowing for categories of capital improvement projects. This bill I introduce because over the course of this term, and a little bit in the previous term as well, we've heard different ideas coming forward about what we can go ahead and go out and borrow money for. Some proponents are advocating for new hospital facilities. Some proponents are advocating for new prison facilities. A lot of us have kids in the public school system, and we know that we need new school facilities, and all of us drive on our village roads, and we need new roads in our communities. The issue at hand, however, is with all of these competing priorities, which one comes first? And so I've introduced this bill so that we can put this forward as a question to our people to be able to vote on in the next election by actually indicating in the ballot box what they want us to prioritize. And so in this bill, we have a list of various projects. The first on the list is the repair of roads ineligible for federal funding. The second is for new or repaired educational facilities. The third is a new adult correctional facility. The fourth is a new Guam Memorial Hospital facility, and the fifth is no additional public borrowing for any project. And the reason why I wanted to introduce this bill was, you know, while we all can understand that everything on this list is important, when we come down to the competing resources available to address these issues, in the end, we're going to want to put these things in priority order, and nobody should be setting these priorities other than the people themselves. And there's no better way for us to gauge which one is of primary importance for our people than to actually put it before them and have them indicate in the ballot box what it is that they want us to focus on. So while all of us can agree that each of these items here are important, we all can also, I think, agree that we need to understand what's important to all of our people. And so I've introduced this bill to ask our people what it is they want us to prioritize when it comes to our borrowing. Another important aspect to note, and it's included in the bill, is that we actually have a public law in place, Public Law 24-222, and this public law states that we're not supposed to be borrowing anything in excess of $25 million if it doesn't go before our people for a vote. However, since the enactment of this law in 1998, we've gone to the bond market nine times, and we've borrowed $1.2 billion, and none of these borrowings have ever gone before the people for a vote. So if we're going to be consistent with existing law, it's important for us to, at the very least, put forward a referendum that asks the question to our people, what is it they want us to prioritize? And so while we do have these items here, we're leaving the record open for at least 10 business days after the conclusion of this hearing to see if there's any other submissions that come in from our people. I have gotten some calls already about adding a new mass transit system to this list to see where the votes come in for something like that. But if there's anything else out there that the community has an interest in, that they would like to have included on this list of different projects to be able to vote on, I'd be very interested in including it in the bill. Again, this is non-binding. This is just for us to be able to get a gauge on what it is that our people want us to prioritize, and I think that it's important for us to go out there and ask our people what it is that they want us to focus not only our resources on, but if we're going to be borrowing our actual debt ceiling and our debt capacity. So that's the whole purpose of introducing Bill Number 103-33, and we'll be going to accept additional testimony if there's anyone else who has any, any other sentiments they'd like to express with respect to this bill. We don't have anyone who signed up to testify, however, on the legislation. And we'll be going to accept additional testimony if there's anyone else who has any, any other sentiments they'd like to express with respect to this bill. We don't have anyone who signed up to testify, however, on the legislation, so we'll leave the record open, and we'll go ahead and receive written testimony over the next 10 business days. And that will conclude the hearing on Bill Number 103-33. We have next on the agenda Bill 106-33. This was introduced by Senator Frank Uggan Jr., an act to amend subsection 4104 of Article 1, Chapter 4, Title 4, relative to providing preferential credit for career employees of the government of Guam who have completed their post-secondary or postgraduate education with the assistance of the Doc Sanchez Scholarship, and for those who apply for supervisory or managerial positions within the agencies and departments of the government of Guam. I'll go ahead and yield the floor now to the author of the legislation for his statement on the introduction of Bill 106-33. Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to everyone here. I want to thank you, first of all, Mr. Chairman, for conducting the public hearing on this particular legislation. You know, Mr. Chairman, every single year, the government of Guam, in the government of Guam, there are a number of public employees that step forward and apply and qualify under the Doc Sanchez Scholarship Program. And this is with the intent, the program was initially established to allow for public employees to be able to acquire their education, and then to eventually contribute from a management perspective in terms of giving back to the community in their government public service position. And in this case, Mr. Chairman, I believe that some of the comments that have been shared with us by our legal counsel is perhaps looking at redirecting this particular provision to insert it under the Doc Sanchez Program qualification standards. And I think that that would address some of the concerns of the legal counsel. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, as we, or as the people of Guam invest in these individuals who acquire their education either at GCC or the University of Guam through the Doc Sanchez Scholarship Program, this would provide for promotional credit and an opportunity for these individuals to acquire five additional points, so that in fact, when it comes to the selection, they will be given that opportunity to hopefully ascend into managerial as well as leadership, key leadership positions, and eventually serve our community from that perspective. So, Mr. Chairman, I thank you once again for having the hearing on this particular legislation. I want to thank the individual that brought this concern to the attention of my office, and I certainly look forward to the deliberation over the course of, not only through the committee, but on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator, thank you, Senator Uggan. On Bill 106-33, we have no individuals who signed up to testify and no written testimony submitted, but we will leave the record open for the remaining business days to receive similar testimony. And that will conclude the hearing on Bill 106-33. That'll take us to Bill 113-33. This is introduced by Senator Tony Ada and Senator Rory Rispicio, an act to add a new Chapter 8 to 11 GCA relative to quantifying and reporting the effects of the Earned Income Tax Credit, EITC, as it relates to compacts of free association. I'll go ahead and yield the floor now to the prime sponsor, Senator Tony Ada, for his statement on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, what this bill does, it requires Department of Revenue and Taxation to identify the amounts of EITC paid to COFA citizens. You know, in 2003, Congress appropriated approximately $600 million for compacts of free associations costs to the impacted areas. And the appropriation was made in, in annual disbursements of about $30 million a year over the following 20 years. However, out of that $30 million, Guam only gets about approximately maybe $15 to $16 million. And during the 2003 congressional hearings on the appropriation measure, the cost of EITC was never, was never discussed at the time. And that is because, you know, we were relying on the Attorney General's opinion that we did not have to pay EITC. And also, as you know, the states, the, the, the states are not impacted by it, because the, the federal government picks up the total cost of EITC that is paid out. So, the cost of per family of EITC can be as high as $6,000 per year. And the biggest beneficiaries of the program are those with annual incomes between $18,000 to $24,000. You know, all the states and territories were promised by Congress that they won't have to make any direct subsidies to COFA citizens. And we hope that the information that the provisions of this bill will provide will get, will give Guam the leverage it needs to make a new case to Congress. You know, DRT alone can't determine the amount of EITC paid to COFA citizens, because taxpayer citizenship is not disclosed on tax returns. And we hope that, you know, there was already a process in place that information was gathered, and that was the, the Section 30 reimbursement. So, you know, there's already a system in place where the federal government will easily be able to work with the local government in getting this type of information back to us. And parts of this provision of the compacts, you know, was that the citizens that reside in the U.S. were not entitled to any direct subsidies. But because the EITC payments most often exceeded the taxes paid to eligible recipients, it eventually became a direct subsidy. And I hope that we'll be able to get this on to our next session, so that revenue tax can work and start to get the numbers in, and we can see how much EITC that have been paid out so far to COFA citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. We also have no testimony submitted for this particular piece of legislation, so we'll go ahead and conclude the hearing on Bill 113-33 and leave the record open to receive additional written testimony. That'll take us to Bill Number 128-33, introduced by Senator Frank Blas Jr. and Senator Jim Espada, an act to add a new Chapter 17 to 4 GCA relative to the creation of the Catastrophic Leave Pool Act of 2015. I will yield the floor now to the prime sponsor, Senator Frank Blas Jr., for his statement on the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Bill 128-33 was, and I have to give credit where credit is due, it was as a result of, first off, an initial conversation with a former colleague in this legislature, a former Senator Tony Lamorena, and other individuals that are concerned. And what this provides is the opportunity for the creation of a pool for sick leave. So that those employees within the government of Guam who have the unfortunate circumstance of having to deal with a, a disease that can be classified as, as a catastrophic illness, will have the opportunity of being able to avail, once all the other, you know, methods and procedures, to be able to get leave have been exhausted, to be able to tap into this, this leave pool, so that they don't have to worry about whether or not they have enough leave to be able to continue to get the, the treatment, medical treatment that they need. And the creation of this pool that allows employees of the government of Guam to be able to donate this leave. The parameters for this, for this leave pool will be set by, of course, the rules and regulations governed by the government of Guam and by the Department of Administration. So, this gives, again, the opportunity to be able to create this, this leave pool for those individuals, those government employees who have catastrophic illnesses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. With respect to this particular bill, we also don't have any submitted testimony. However, we will leave the record open to go ahead and receive additional written testimony if any members of the public wish to do so. And at this time, we'll go ahead and consider Bill 128-33 having been heard. That'll take us to the last measure on the agenda, Bill Number 130-33. This is introduced by myself. It's an act to add a new subsection 22437 to 5 GCA relative to refunding the general, relative to refunding the government of Guam General Obligation Bond Series 2007A and 2009A respectively, by issuing a government of Guam General Obligation Bond Series. The purpose of this particular bill is to take advantage of favorable interest rate conditions that would allow us to refund existing, existing debt without increasing the amount of debt outstanding and without increasing the duration of the debt. So, we're not taking on any kind of new debt. We're just refunding the existing debt to a lower interest rates, so that we can save our people some money. We do have some items, however, in the bill that have been attested to by the Guam Economic Development Authority. And we do have signed up to testify Ms. Mona Silva Tyran from GIDEA, and Ms. Tina Garcia from GIDEA, who have indicated that they would like to provide some testimony with respect to Bill Number 130-33. So, I'd go like, go ahead and invite the two ladies to please join us. And if they can share with us the perspective of GIDEA as it relates to Bill 130-33. And just to, just to clarify, it doesn't indicate that they are objectionable to the idea of refunding, it's just the mechanism by which the bill is suggesting that we do. So, I'll go ahead and yield to Senator Tyran to go ahead and provide us with GIDEA's perspective.
Thank you so much. I'll be reading the testimony of our administrator, John Rios. Hafaday Chairman, Senator Mike Siniklas, and members of the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development. I'm here today to provide testimony on Bill 130-33. We would like to work with the chairman and his committee in achieving any goal of the refunding these bonds for savings, but under the language in Bill 130-33, the government of Guam will not realize savings by refunding the 2007A and 2009A GO bonds with new GO bonds. Based on the current market rates, we've received refunding Guam's GO bonds with new GO bonds would increase debt service by approximately $48 million under current market conditions. We would recommend a change to the bill that would refund the two existing general obligation bonds by issuing new business privileged tax or BPT bonds for several reasons. BPT bonds have a much higher credit rating than Guam's GO bonds, and accordingly, would save Gov Guam significantly more money. Guam's BPT bonds are rated seven notches higher, A by Standard and Poor's, and A minus by Fitch, than Guam's GO bonds rated double B minus by Standard and Poor's and not rated by Fitch. In today's market, the seven notch difference in ratings means that the interest costs on newly issued Guam GO bonds is currently about 115 basis points higher than the interest costs on Guam BPT bonds. Guam could decrease debt service payments by, for example, realizing net cash flow savings of approximately $47 million under current market conditions by refunding the existing GO bonds with higher rated BPT bonds, because BPT bonds can be sold at lower interest rates than Guam's GO bonds because of their higher credit ratings. The taxes used to pay BPT and GO bonds all flow into and out of the same pot, the general fund, making Guam indifferent from this perspective. However, a refunding using BPT bonds under the current market conditions would result in significantly more general fund savings, freeing up resources that would be available for other purposes. The rating agencies and investors have not expressed any concerns about additional use of the BPT credit. BPT bondholders and rating analysts anticipated in their rating and investment decisions that there would be additional BPT issuances within the limits established in the original BPT bond indenture. The proposed refunding using BPT bonds should not adversely impact the credit ratings of either the BPT or GO bonds, but instead would show that by lowering annual debt service costs, we are better managing our debt position. Lastly, a BPT refunding of the 2007 and 2009 GO bonds, if completed before September 4th, could result in as much as $2 million in savings in the current fiscal year. The bottom line is that Bill 103, or 130 should be amended to maximize the savings to Gov Guam under current market conditions. Changing the legislation to allow for a BPT refunding bond would be very attractive to Guam and would significantly reduce debt service costs thereby directly benefiting the people of Guam. I would further like to respectfully request the removal of Section 2 of this bill that states GIDEA shall waive all fees relative to the bond issuance. As you know, GIDEA does not receive general fund appropriations and must rely on certain revenue streams to maintain operations. GIDEA bond fees are used to assist GIDEA in covering all costs tied to this financing, as well as to ensure all required annual bond disclosure reports are submitted over the life of the bond, which in the case of the bond refunding will be for 25 years. Please allow us to continue to sustain operations by allowing GIDEA to collect on the fees of this financing. I thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 130-33. Please let us know if we can provide further information. Situs Massey.
Thank you, Senator Tyran. Ms. Garcia, did you have anything you'd like to add on the, on behalf of GIDEA?
No, sir. I'm just here to further support GIDEA's position on the bill.
Okay, thank you. I would like to have a conversation with you guys about how, why we structured the bill this way, and maybe we can go back and forth as to the cost benefit of whether it should be a BPT bond or a general obligation bond. I know that the original iteration of this bill did have it as a business privileged tax bond, and the reason why I changed it to a general obligation bond was because I was concerned about us refunding an existing general obligation bond into strictly a business privileged tax bond. And here's why. Not too long ago, we floated bonds backed by the business privileged tax, the GRT. Recently, when we were having discussions about some items that were going to affect the private sector, particularly the minimum wage, one of the concerns about the increasing of that was the negative impact it would have to our business community. And one of the discussions that came up as a result of this conversation was what if we were to reduce the GRT to offset the impact of an increased minimum wage? And so, you know, over the course of that discussion, several things transpired. One of them was that a reduction of the GRT was not something that we could consider at the time because of the bonds tied to the GRT. Another issue was something I was also hoping to explore going forward, and that would be an increasing of the small business exemption threshold under the Dave Santos Amendment, because if we can increase that threshold, that will be good for small businesses, it will help them to grow, it will help them to open up. The problem is that also that threshold is difficult to affect because of the debt that's tied to the business privileged tax. And so, my biggest concern about refunding a current general obligation bond with a 25 year remaining duration into a business privileged tax bond with a 25 year remaining duration is, are we going to be locking up our ability to potentially reduce the GRT or potentially increase the small business exemption for 25 years because we've converted $400 million of debt from general obligation categories that they're currently under into business privileged tax categories that, that GIDEA is basically proposing right now? And the reason why I, we need to have a very clear conversation about this is, I understand that maybe the BPTs might have a lower interest rate, but what's the opportunity cost for that interest rate? If we're going to save, you know, a percent or a half a percent or what have you, at what expense does that come at if we cannot reduce our GRT, or if we cannot increase our small business exemptions for 25 years? And would we possibly be better off refunding these things under a general obligation category and keeping the government flexible on the GRT side, so that in the event that we want to reduce it, we have that flexibility? So, and this is an economic development question, because, you know, lowering the GRT could spur business development, it can spur additional jobs being created, new markets being opened up, more products and services for our people, more money circulating. But if we're going to save, if we're going to forego that in the interest of saving on this bond, is that the best economic decision for us to make? And that's why, for me, I introduced this bill as a general obligation bill and not a business privileged tax bill, because I would like us to have the flexibility on the GRT, to be able to potentially lower it or potentially create more exemptions for small businesses. So, I'm putting those two things on the table now. How does GIDEA feel about, about its position of us refunding this strictly as a BPT bond?
Just for technical, some notes for that, the BPT bonds pledge three points of the four points. So, as long as we don't go below the three points, we wouldn't be impacting our bond covenants.
But those are existing, are existing BPT bonds.
Yeah.
So, if we take on more BPT debt, it's going to go from three points up to what?
Right.
You know, because right now, if we don't go below three, then we're okay on the existing BPT side.
Correct.
But if we, if we convert all of this GO, $400 million in debt into BPT debt, that's going to go from 3% up to what, 3.5%?
So, under the current bond structure, real quick, what we're proposing is that the bonds wouldn't, the new bonds wouldn't go beyond the existing maturity. If we did these bonds, they would mature in fiscal year '39. The existing bonds mature in fiscal year '42. So, we're still operating within existing parameters. We have reviewed the proposal with our bond council, with our underwriters, and we wouldn't have to increase the current 3%, pledge, because they allow us to borrow, and it's in the rating agency report, up to three times additional bonds. And so, our debt service would have to be... And so our debt service would have to be limited to three times the collection of the three points. So what that means is we're, if we're at a $200 million collection on BPT, we're still not maxed out because our annual debt service would only go at the most 55 million. So if we go 55 times three, 165 million would be our amount of BPT that would meet, that would be, we would be able to support. And our current collections are at 221 mil. And we're currently at about, sorry. So we're currently about 100 and, you know, we're still collecting more than what the current bond structure allows. So S&amp;P acknowledges that additional bonds can be issued up to three times the pledge revenues.
So three times of 3%, whatever the 3% is-
Correct.
-can be pledged for debt service for BPT bonds-
Yeah.
-and still keep us outside of a default scenario?
We would, yeah, we wouldn't have to increase the current three-point pledge.
Okay. So where are we at right now on that three-point pledge?
Currently, we're paying about, we're currently paying only 30 million, about 30 mil average per year on the BPT. So we're about five times below what we're required.
So why did we pledge 3%? If we can go three times, if we can go three times the debt service amount, why are we pledging 3% of our BPT? Because, I mean, it's those kind of things that prevent us from being able to, you know, lower our GRT from below three, for example. So if we're able to do three times the debt service, why did we, why do we pledge 3%?
We wanted to strengthen, we wanted a strong credit when the bonds were being initially reviewed, and we said we'd pledge three points to get the best interest rates.
So if we do this as a BPT bond, where it's still going to be at that three-point pledge-
Correct.
-and will still fall within that threshold?
Yes.
Okay. So we won't be increasing the need for us to pledge more than 3%?
We wouldn't have to go above the current three-point pledge.
Okay. And so not, just so I have you guys in front of me, that means then that we can still lower, as of today, even if we were to convert this into a BPT bond, we would still be able to lower GRT by as much as 1% given our current collection rates, and we would still be able to increase the small business threshold exemptions if it also didn't exceed 1% of the GRT collections?
The bonds only pledge the three points, so we could do whatever we want with the rest of it as long as we don't go below the three points.
Okay. So my second question then on the same subject is, what's the, of the existing BPT pledge for that 3%, what's the maturity date for those? And does the maturity date for this one fall within the same duration, or are we going to be extending that duration with this, if we did it as a BPT bond?
So the maturity of the 2011 and 2012 bond goes all the way out to fiscal year 42. These bonds, again, we're not extending the current maturity with, the last payment would be in fiscal year 39.
Okay. Out of curiosity, when was the last time we floated a GO bond?
It was the 2009 bond.
The series 2009?
Yes.
Okay. So the one that we're refunding was also the last time that we floated a GO?
Correct.
And so these estimates here that say a BPT would come in at a better pricing than a GO is based on the advisors to Gita?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Our underwriters.
Okay, the underwriters, yeah, okay. I mean, and I guess if you can just take it back to them, I'm still very curious because this was something that I was very curious about when I was evaluating this whole thing. I'm trying to understand how a business privileged tax bond that is pledged by a single revenue source, which is just GRT, how does that get a better rating than a GO bond that has GRT, income tax, withholding tax, all the other taxes to back it up? Because, you know, when I evaluated, I'm like, wouldn't, wouldn't a financing mechanism that has only a single source of repayment be more risky than a financial instrument that has multiple sources of repayment that can, that can offset anything that might come in short? And so I'm just curious why the underwriters are so convinced that a BPT bond would get a higher rating than a GO bond, because the GO bond would still have BPT as one of its revenue streams. You know, so why would, why would a bond that has a single revenue stream have a better rating than a bond that has multiple revenue streams that also include that single revenue stream? You know, I would think that the diversified revenue streams will have less risk, and so less risk would have a better pricing. So I'm just, I'm just curious as to the underwriters' logic there. And what I'll do is I'll have a conversation with Gita after this hearing to try and vet that out. Maybe the underwriters have some information, I don't know, you know? But I just, I'm trying to make sense of that. And if we can, if we can close that off, then we'll be able to determine which, which structure we'll go with. But as for me, on my end, as a sponsor of the bill, I'm very flexible. What, just so long as we're not going to be tying the hands of the government's ability to be able to spur business development by lowering taxes or increasing small business exemptions, and just so long as we're getting the best savings for the coffers, I'm on board. Okay? So we'll talk more about it, but that kind of covers the idea of what kind of funding source we're going to use. The second thing I wanted to talk about was your fee. I understand that Gita gets their fee from the bond that's floated. Gita gets, according to law, they get 2% of the total aggregate amount of the debt. You know? How much would Gita get from this, from this refunding?
The 2% you're referring to is kind of the maximum cost of issuance, so that would include all costs, underwriters, the bonds, and the rating agency fees. Gita's fees are tied to something that was adopted early in the 80s, and it's calculated at 1/2 of 1% for the first 10 mil, and then 1/5 of 1% of the principal above 10 mil.
So how much would Gita be getting on this refunding?
So we calculated this, and Gita would roughly get about $840,000 or about 1/5 of 1% of the total bond issuance.
Okay. Now, the reason why this is kind of a concern for me, and I put in the bill that Gita's going to waive their fee on this refunding, is because you guys already got a fee on the first round when these bonds were issued back in 2007 and 2009, right? And so for me, my concern was why are we going to be doubling up the fees for the same debt, basically, if the debt is just a refunding of what was already taken out in 2007, 2009? And so the other concern I had with the refunding fee for Gita is that that $840,000 has an interest expense attached to it. So if we refund that $840,000 and we pay for it over the life of the bond at 25 years, assuming a 5% interest rate, we have $840,000 times 5%. We're paying $42,000 per year in interest on that $840,000 fee, and we multiply that by 25 years, and we're talking about $1 million in interest on that fee. And, you know, I can understand if maybe it was the first time we floated the bond and you're collecting a fee, then okay. But you floated this in 2007, 2009, and you already got the fee, and now you're going to float it again and get another fee for the same debt. And that fee is going to have an interest expense over the life of the bond. And so the total cost of the fee from Gita is going to be 1,505,000 in interest expense and $840,000 in principal. So it's almost going to be $2 million in a total cost to the taxpayer. And I guess we'll have to talk to my colleagues about this, but I'm of the opinion that if you guys already got a fee on an initial offering, you know, for us to be doubling down and collecting the same fee, I have a difficult time with that. Okay? So I'll go ahead and leave the language as is in the bill, but I'm sure we may be getting some amendments from some other senators on the floor perspective of that. But I just hope Gita can appreciate the reason why I included that language. I can also appreciate why Gita's coming here saying they want their fee also. But that's kind of why I included that language there. I'm trying to save our people 2 million bucks in debt service. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Gita? Vice Speaker?
I'm intrigued by two of your comments. Bullet point number two says that you could realize approximately $47 million. And then your last bullet point says that if we do it before September the 4th, you'd save an extra two, I mean, you would save two this year. Is that two plus the 47, or is that two within the 47?
That two is part of the 47.
And that's the same.
Immediate savings in the current fiscal year, yes.
And can you go through and do the calculations for me on how you got to that 47?
Okay. So when we ran the annual debt service, anticipated debt service, the next bond payments for the two, 2007 and 2009 bonds, we've already paid one in June. There would be savings because we wouldn't have to make that payment for 2000, in September, September 4th, or September 5th actually is when it's due.
And how much, and that's the 2 million that would be due that day?
Correct. There's more due, but that's, that's savings because we still have to deposit funds for the next payment, but we would deposit 2.7 million less for the next payment.
And how did you get the other 45?
So when you lower the interest payments, that 45 came up on annual debt service payments from the old debt service to the new debt service.
So over the 25-year period, it's about 1 and 1/2, not even 1 and 1/2, right? 1.6 million savings a year?
Yeah, about 1.6 to 1.7. Towards the end of the term, it comes out to about 3.3 to 3.6. So that's how it calculates out.
And I'm glad you mentioned that because as you get towards the end, the savings would be more because you're just paying principal at that point, right?
Yes.
How much have we paid in interest over the last eight years and five and six years on these two bonds? We always pay more at the very beginning, right?
Right.
So how much have we paid in interest in the 2007 bond over the last seven, almost eight years?
Well, for the '07 bonds, we haven't reduced the payments. I'd have to get you the exact interest payments we've been making on that. We pay annually about 8 million in interest payments since '07.
Eight times eight would be about 64.
Okay.
And on the 2009?
On the 2009, the original par was 271 million. We've reduced that to 253. So we're already paying principal, we've already reduced the principal by about 18 But I'd have to get you the exact breakdown of how much interest we've paid down, or how much interest we've paid to date. I only have numbers from fiscal year going forward.
So you have the, you have the net, the new par amount combining both of them?
Yes.
What would their par value be separately? If we, if we, if you said we reduce the 2009 to 251, is that the par value that you're talking about now?
We would, we would reduce, we would pay off all of the 2007 bonds, so we would pay up all the, about 152 million. And, what's the par? And we're paying off almost everything on the 2009.
What do you mean by almost everything?
Because there is about, one, two, three. There's some debt service in the, from 15 to 20 that it doesn't make sense to refinance. So we're not refinancing those principles.
Why wouldn't it make sense to refinance?
Because some of the principles have already lower interest rate than what we're looking at.
And in the 2007, is everything there making sense to refinance after you've paid 64 million in interest? What was the par value of that one?
Of the 2007? About 151.9 million.
So the original, no, the original?
The original par. Of the 2007 was 151.9 million.
And so now we're refin, refunding it, I should use the word refinance. We're refunding it at $100,000 more than what we started, and we've already paid 64 million in interest. And so we're, how do you guys account for the 64 million now? Is that, well, that was being able to use the 150 over the last eight years?
Yeah. Well, we used all the funds that we borrowed. Let me see. Was that '07, '04? So we used the money, sorry. So the 2007 was a CIP bond. We used that for public schools, for the hospital UOG, and then we paid down some of the COLA. And so that's why we didn't, we did capitalize interest in the front end because a number of those were capital improvement projects. So we were allowed to pay interest only, interest only through 2019 on those.
So, so in the 2007 one, because they were CIP projects, we've not paid any principal. We've just paid interest for the last eight years.
Yes.
And now we're refinancing, refunding it again?
The entire amount, yes.
And we're just saying, thanks for the use of the 151, and so now, and as a present, we gave you 64 million?
No. But then we're reducing the interest payments going forward for the '07. That's what we're proposing, is that we're reducing that liability of the government.
And, and how much interest will you pay over the next 25 years on this?
So total debt service.
Close to 450?
We would be paying about 312 million over the next, through fiscal year 2039 in interest.
So we'd be paying about an additional $160 million in interest to refund this?
For the two, I was calculating both.
No, for the seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If the total debt service for the-
For the seven, the total debt service is 268.7, but I don't have it broken down.
268, what was the 312?
So for the existing debt service on the '07, it's, our principal and interest payments were total 268.7 mil. For the 2009, our total debt service on that through maturity is 527 mil. So total existing debt service is about 800 mil, 797.8 million versus what we're estimating will be 746.9 million. So we're reducing the debt service by about 48.9 million.
So if we refund both of these, we'll have a total debt service of 795, right?
That's where we are today.
If we were to just keep them as is, what would our total debt service be? If we were to just keep them as is, what would our total debt service be for the two bonds with the, uh, with their current?
I'm sorry, um, I, I, um, so today's debt service for these two bonds is 795.8 for the two bonds today. If we refund it, we would drop that debt service to 746.9.
So that's where your 47 million dollar savings is?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Give me a moment, I'm going to add this up soon.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Vice Speaker, I'm sorry, I don't have the historical, um, my history here just starts on 2012 interest. I don't have what we paid in, um, 9, 10, 11, so I'm going to have to come back to you with that.
Okay. Actually, I'd like to see the entire calculation. I mean, I'm really visual. I, I need to see all these numbers and try to explain to me what we do with, what we do this with the interest that we paid already, the 64 on the seven bond and whatever interest you, total interest payments we've made to date on the 09, um, what we, uh, how much that is? And I would imagine that's over 100 million between the two of them. Um, and how do we count for that? Does that, do we add that to the 746 and say, actually this, the savings isn't savings because we're now paying the interest all over and we add the 100 to the 746 and we're up to 846 and we actually lost 50?
I think if we initially did this with BPT bonds, we would, we would probably not be here, but the GOs at that time was what, um, they sold for. So, yeah, the interest, the interest got us there.
You're, you're our, our debt.
Yes.
Debt advisor.
Yes.
Um, should we take a malpractice against you guys on that one and not, uh, so that the commission isn't, doesn't need to be paid this, since you should have advised us to do a BPT on the first one rather than, anyway. How did you guys arrive at the, the present value? So I want the calculation on, on, on all the interest and everything and explain to me what we're, how, what miraculous accounting thing we address with the, the amounts of interest that we've already paid. How do, what's, how did you arrive at the present value of 2% that, the savings? Oh, I guess that's in the bill, I'm sorry.
The present value on a BPT bond would be 7.8%.
Okay. If we were to allow you to float the, this total amount of 408, how much of this would we be paying in commissions and fees to the underwriters, legal counsel, to you and to everybody else? You can provide that to me.
Yeah, we're, um, estimating that the issuance cost would be no more than 1 to 1.5% of par, 1 to 1.5% of the par amount.
So one?
One to one.
So it'll be about four, 4.2 million? My abacus is a little slow.
Hold on. 7.1, 270, 23, times 1.5%. This will be 6.1, 2. About 4.1 to 6.1.
Yeah. 4.1 to 4.6 or 4.1 to 6 mil?
4.1 to 6 mil.
That's, that's quite a range.
0.5 times 1.5%. Yeah, about 6 mil.
On this one, will there be any cap FII since, or do you get to carry over the capital improvement projects from the 07 to, to justify cap FII on this one?
There is no cap FII here. We'll, we'll be making payments, um, beginning fiscal year 2016.
And how much will those interest payments be?
Uh, we didn't break it up, but the total principal payment, total payment for the new bonds we're estimating would be, um, 23.7 mil.
27 each year, starting 16?
No. So, um, I'll share with you the schedule, Senator, Vice Speaker, I apologize, but, um, it's, uh, the new BPT because again, we're, we're comparing it to the existing debt service. Um, we're not re, we're, we still have a little bit of the 09 that we're going to be paying, 5.6 mil, plus the new BPT about 23.7 mil for a total debt service of 29.3 mil. And that's what we're paying today. So just for fiscal year 16, we're not paying, we're not, um, we're anticipating that the debt service will be flat is what we're paying today. Going forward, beginning, uh, 2017, and again, this is a mathematical structure, the debt service will be 27.7 mil, a 1.6 mil savings, uh, 27, and then it jumps to, we'll share this with you.
Okay. What interest rate did, do you guys believe that you're going to be able to get from the market at this time?
We, we calculated an all-in true interest cost of 4, 4.02%.
What, what's the current GO interest rate you're paying now?
6.31.
And your, your anticipated 4.2?
0.2.
How realistic is that with the current market conditions and with us being a territory, unfortunately, at, at this time with our sister on the Caribbean coast?
Um, again, I think, um, they're looking at, um, our performance and our economy and, um, I think is exemplified, um, with what happened with GWA, there's, um, stronger, um, confidence in Guam's economy. When we were talking to the rating agencies there, they've seen the improvements in tourism with our diversification. They understand the private sector is growing and so we believe that with the strength of the economy, this would, um, we would be able to achieve this interest rate.
And how far up would the interest rate need to go before you decide that it wouldn't be, um, economical to, to do this refunding?
I think if, if we fall below the 2% savings threshold, we wouldn't go forward.
And what would that interest rate be?
2%? I'd have to come back to you with that, but, um, but yeah, we, um, I think if at any time, whatever restrictions, let me have it there, if it comes, maybe about five?
If it went up to five, you'd say no deal?
Yeah. Right, if it's five or six, um, but five or 6% or, or if it goes to 2% or below, yeah. So if it, if it falls below the 2% savings, then we wouldn't go forward.
That wouldn't give us very much space if we were at 6.3.
Yeah.
So if it goes above 4.3, it's an, it's a no-go?
We're saying that maybe if it went up to five, we wouldn't go forward because that may take us over to, if it took us to a, um, savings below 2%, we wouldn't, we wouldn't go forward under the, yeah, because we always operated on a minimum 2% savings.
Okay. And, um, when you calculate the present value savings, what discount rate do you use?
I'll get that, I have to come back to you with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Any of my other colleagues have any questions or comments for, uh, the panel? If none, I'm just some closing, um, clarifications. Uh, the original iteration of the bill that we looked at did have an interest rate minimum in excess of 6%. We've actually raised the bar for you guys and we lowered it down to five and a quarter. So, um, we're pretty comfortable, Mr. Vice Speaker, that, uh, five and a quarter is a good starting point here because when we looked at the 2007 and 2009 GOs, um, the lowest rate on the coupon for both of those issues was five and a quarter. So we're basically saying you cannot float this if it's anything higher than what's already existing out there. Um, on the concern of the capitalized interest for the previous years prior to this refunding, that's just the cost of, the cost of the capital. Um, there's no real way that we can recover that, but, um, going forward, the intention of the legislation is for us to at least incur a savings on the remaining life of the, of the, of the issue. So since we're not increasing the duration of the bond and since we're hitting a target lower interest rate, um, it's going to, over the life of the obligation, uh, result in a savings versus if we don't do anything at all. Um, the only concern at this point is, um, whether or not, uh, the, um, fee is going to be included for GIDEA. But that's another 2 million bucks that we can potentially save over the life of the bond, so that's a conversation we can probably have. But, uh, with the question of the Vice Speaker on the capitalized interest, we did actually authorize Imaga Lahy to, to factor that into the final offering. It's on page three, line 11. Um, and we say that they may have capitalized interest and/or interest-only payments until the end of FY 2016. So we do allow one year of potential cap FII or interest-only payments. And the reason why, um, I don't find it to be too detrimental is when we look at the, um, the graph that you guys provided of the savings on the backend, um, if GIDEA structures the offering properly, those backend savings will reduce a little bit to offset the, uh, front-loaded savings on any capitalized interest or interest-only payments that we take upfront. And the reason why I kind of wanted, I wanted to give the governor that flexibility is, um, we are currently working with the administration as well on trying to, um, come up with the, uh, resources to do reform of our retirement system. And that may require us to have, uh, access to, um, capital, at least for FY 2016, so that we can implement, uh, uh, the retirement reform that, uh, the Vice Speaker and I have been, uh, talking about for, for the last six months already. So, um, we're going to coordinate very closely with GIDEA, Imaga Lahy, and, um, and the retirement fund going into the budget session to see if capitalizing some of this interest, at least for 2016, uh, could help us, uh, use that capital instead to, to fund the, um, retirement system reform that a lot of our new plan employees are waiting for. So, um, that's why, um, I specifically made sure we wrote into this version of the bill an authorization for the governor to be able to capitalize interest or pay interest-only payments for, for one year only, uh, and for the, um, authority to smooth it out on the backend with those, those increased savings from 2037 to 2039. That way we can at least have the resources to fund some retirement reform, uh, for FY 2016. Uh, so I just wanted to kind of bring those things up as we conclude the hearing. Um, now, now just for some, just to give GIDEA an idea of how we're going to operate here, because I know the interest rate environment is very sensitive and you guys want to be able to go out onto market with this, uh, relatively quickly. Um, the body is going to be coordinating very closely with the Vice Speaker because as per standing rules, because we're already having a public hearing on this bill, it can be included on the budget, um, as a provision within the budget bill that we passed. And I know we're going to be going into budget session in August. So either this bill will be, um, moving forward as a standalone version, or we may have it just introduced as an amendment to the Budget Act so that, um, we can authorize this, um, this refunding as quickly as possible. But, um, I do thank, uh, the agency for, um, giving us all the information that you have so far. Uh, please, um, provide the Vice Speaker with the responses to his questions as well. And if we can just get some clarification from the underwriters, why they, why they insist that a BPT financing is, uh, cheaper than a GO financing? I'm still wanting, uh, a firm, uh, understanding of exactly how one revenue stream is cheaper than multiple revenue streams, um, for my own edification. I mean, that'll help to educate me, but, uh, at least from my, my perspective right now, I'm still not fully understanding how that works out. But, um, aside from that, I'd like to thank you very much for, um, for joining us and providing us with the information that you have. Uh, we're going to go ahead and conclude the hearing on the bill and consider bill 130-33 having been heard. Uh, we'll go ahead and receive testimony over the next, um, for this particular bill, uh, at least five business days. Um, but that way we can begin strategizing with the, um, the Budget Chairman as to whether or not this will be moved forward as a standalone measure or included in our, our budget, our Budget Act that we're going to be entertaining in the beginning of August. So thank you very much for, ladies, for, for your contribution today. That will conclude all of the items that we have here on the agenda. Any of my colleagues have any, um, parting remarks or closing comments? If none, we'll go ahead and conclude today's hearing. If anybody has any additional testimony they would like to submit, they can go ahead and do so to the Office of Senator Sinicolas at senatorsinicolas@gmail.com or submit it to our mailroom here at the Guam Legislature. And we'll go ahead and adjourn this hearing at 3:30 this afternoon. Thank you very much.